Good evening, welcome to the November 19th, 2020 Parma City School District Board of Education Meeting. Would everybody please stand for the pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Invisible with liberty and justice for our.
Roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Here.
Mr. Kreis.
Here.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to confirm that all board members and administrators are connected to this meeting. So if each person would please confirm that they can see here or both when asked, please do so. I have that part down. Mr. Vaughn?
Both.
Mrs. Carpus?
Both.
Mr. Kreis?
Both.
Dr. Smilak?
Both.
Mr. Nucio?
Both.
And I, John Schweitzer, also am both. Dr. Smilak, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
It is.
Thank you. Board members and administrators, at any time during this meeting, you cannot hear or see the other participants, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed. Dr. Smilak, please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting, and if the livestreaming stops for any reason, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty may be addressed. This meeting will be conducted electronically in accordance with House Bill 197, as more specifically detailed in the attached notice. With that, I move to adopt Resolution 2020-11495, suspending requirement for in-person meetings under board bylaws.
Second.
We have a motion second to adopt Resolution 2020-1145. Wait a minute. And the first one to Resolution 2020-11495, and then a motion, which one is it? For 2020-11495, are there any questions or comments from the board? It said 4056 on mine, so that, I'm sorry. But I got it now. Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Resolution 2020-11495 has been approved. Information to the board this evening, Dr. Smilak?
Thanks, just a few comments. First, we, you know, are aware of the information that the county submitted yesterday in terms of, you know, sort of a stay-at-home order. Now, certainly that does not apply to most of our students who are learning remotely and have been. Some folks have asked about how does that apply to the students that are coming in, particularly the career tech students. As we detailed, actually two weeks ago tonight, you know, we're at a point where the only students who are entering the building are students who are in what we would call, you know, essential in-person programming. And so that's some students with special needs and disabilities, and also clearly the career tech students. So we continue to monitor to make sure that we are operating in a safe way. Candidly, we've had a good number of quarantines. You can see that on our data dashboard. We are, in some cases, juggling. In some cases, we are closing specific units if we can't staff them because of teachers in quarantine or staff members in quarantine. So I certainly want to paint a realistic picture that the road is difficult, but it is one that we continue to believe is the right one. The county's specifications yesterday, to be honest with you, while they used some more forceful language and sort of called some new attention to some guidelines that they've already stated, the reality is the substance wasn't different than what they had submitted when they put forth reopening guidelines. The reopening guidelines also specified that if we were in red, we should be remote. And so we've already, you know, somewhat deviated from that in a way that we believe can be safe. Students with disabilities that are coming in and students in career technical education programs are socially distant. We are, in many cases, in larger rooms. Certainly, we have many procedures in place in terms of cleaning and hand sanitizing. So, you know, we have safety procedures in place for the small percentage of students that are attending in person. I would also say that, I think that what you see right now, especially across Kiowa County, is representative of, you know, just a lack of centralized leadership. I would submit to you that of the 37 districts in Kiowa County, right now, you have approximately 37 different plans. And what that says to me is there is no one right plan. We all are doing the best we possibly can to navigate a very difficult situation with the different, you know, forces that we deal with, which are our students, our families, our parents, our programming. And so right now, we continue to want to stay the course with what we've begun in the second quarter. And we will react accordingly if we need to do something different. Again, you know, you go back to the old ax versus scalpel model. You know, we could ax everything and close everything right now, but we're choosing to use a scalpel instead, and when we need to close a program because of quarantines, we're doing that. So I just want to provide that update to the board in terms of what our plan is and also what our mindset is. I also want to take a minute to ask folks to look to our social media and our website. We've started a program, What We're Thankful For, and folks are submitting their various nominees from across the district. And really, we've begun just to do a few, but, you know, I wanted to highlight Lee Ludwig from yesterday. And this was submitted by Kate Bellitt, who is one of our teachers. Lee is a classroom assistant, has gone out of her way to help students in any way she can. She set up a Google Classroom with a link. This allows students each afternoon to log into her Google Classroom and receive help in all of their classes, including encore. Her dedication to her students is amazing. Again, that's Lee Ludwig, and that was on our social media yesterday. And we're continuing to do that throughout this Thanksgiving period. But I just wanted to take a minute to say that Lee was nominated, and rightfully so. I mean, what that shows is really dedication to learn a very new skill. Our assistants had very little training, they had some training in Google Classroom, but very little. We just recently provided all of our assistants with devices. And she's really taken it upon herself to self-teach, really, to make sure that she can meet the needs of her students. And while she was highlighted yesterday, I also know that stories like that are not unique to Lee. Stories like that are common across our district in terms of people doing everything they possibly can to really make an impact on our students, despite the fact that we're in some pretty difficult conditions that, you know, no one would have ever selected. And I really couldn't be more grateful for all of our teachers, all of our assistants, all of our administrators, who continue to find ways to embody our core values during our COVID period. Creativity, communication, and compassion. And we continue to practice those throughout. If you have time, if you have someone that you want to nominate, we really encourage you to do so. The forums are in any of our social media outlets or our website because we know that we have many exemplars, and we're grateful. And hopefully, you know, folks will continue to take the time to recognize. So just wanted to highlight both of those tonight, and that concludes my statements.
Thank you very much, Dr. Smilak, very nice words, and we have a lot of dedicated people. Anybody else? Okay, it moves us to communications. Mrs. Carpus?
We do not, I don't have anything tonight.
Our members, Treasure, I know you have something.
I do. I have my five-year forecast presentation. Pam's going to share the screen with me. Okay, I'm now the host. And where did my PowerPoint go? Okay, hold on a second. Where'd it go? Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So we begin slideshow. Okay, so the thing people usually want to know is, how long are we positive? We are positive cash balance at the end of fiscal year 2024. It's not very high positive balance, but it's still positive through '24. Last year, you know, everybody knows the governor cut our budget $2.4 million. Well, this year, they didn't restore that $2.4 million, so we're really out $4.8 million. Which, if we had that money, the forecast would look much better. But we have to just try to make adjustments with the money we have. Revenue's probably going to be flat for the next three or four years until we recover from COVID. The state gets a lot of their funding through either income tax or sales tax. And since there's a lot of people out of work and businesses are shut down, they're not getting a lot of revenue. Property taxes didn't fall as much as people said they would. There was, a lot of people saying it could fall 10% to 20%, but it's really not, it was down a little, but not much. Here's our revenues and our expenditures, this is pretty self-explanatory. As revenues remain flat and expenditures increase, the green line shows that the fund balance is going to go down. And that's, that's pretty easy to understand. We do have a $7.6 million levy that expires at the end of '24, but we can't even bring it to the ballot anytime soon. This is our revenue sources. This property taxes are 63% and state foundation is 23%. People always say, well, I get my tax bill and 2/3 of my tax bill goes to the schools. Well, that's how we're funded. Cities are funded through income tax, so they get such a smaller share. We get, that's our main source of revenue, so that's why it's so high. This is a little confusing, this sheet, but if you look at, the brown is where the 30-day level is for cash. And the yellow is what our funding balance, ending fund balance is. And it keeps going up every year until we start going down into deficit spending. So it's starting to decrease, and you'll see the last year of '25 that ending cash balance and unencumbered balance are both negative. Here's a screen showing our revenue. Since we have no property tax levies up until '25, the blue and lavender color are going to be the same. All our expenditures are in the last one, which they keep going up. And you can see that line shows our fund balance going down. This is just showing our local and revenue share. I mean, it's, we get most of our share through property taxes, that's why it's so high. And then 30% or 23% of what was before is shown in the brown. So we do have a lot of challenges. We don't know what the budget's going to be. And the next budget, the next Congress or state, I should say, the next state senators and reps can pass a budget and they could cut our budget, they could increase it. We don't really know. There's plans, they're talking about the fair funding, that they're trying to pass that, but we don't know if that's going to happen. If it does, when's it going to take effect? There's just so many unknowns at this time. We do receive money called the Student Wellness and Success Funds, which we put in Fund 467. That's the governor's big project as to, he wants to focus on wellness of students. That's not general fund money, so we did not include it in this five-year forecast. And here's our general fund expenditures. Like I always say, that salaries and benefits are around 80% of our expenditures. Here it's 77. Purchase services are also pretty high. That's our third highest because purchase services would include money we pay to charter schools, Ed Choice. And there's the Peterson Scholarship. So we're not actually buying these things, but we have to show them in our books, they're counted as purchase services. Here's another graph, it might be a little confusing, but you can see the red is our salaries, which is around $80 million. And then benefits to the blue line, which is the next largest. And then purchase services would be the one after that. Expenditures are increasing while our revenue is staying flat. Here's another one showing our Ed Choice numbers. Ed Choice is the green bar, so you can see every year it's going up. There is a bill in the Senate right now to freeze, actually change the way they're going to fund this program for Ed Choice. Like, only certain schools, you have to have a D or an F to be in it, but it hasn't passed. So I monitor it, but I'm not going to say this is what's going to happen because it's uncertain at this point. So what now, of course, we have the one levy we have to renew in fiscal year '24. We anticipate state funding to be flat because we don't know what's going to happen. Ed Choice, we have to watch. There's a bill in the Senate, like I said, and we just have to monitor our costs and try to find ways to increase our revenue. Any questions?
I'll ask a question here.
Sure.
What's the, do you have any idea what the average levy cycle is? And it's okay if you don't, I've never asked you this before. But my point that I want to make here is that we haven't passed a new money levy since 2011. We've had multiple means, including Ed Choice, including last year's COVID cuts, which we understand. Multiple means of the state chipping away at state funding. And yet, we project a positive cash balance through 2024, which would be 13 years without new funding from our communities. And we know that they already provide, you know, what you showed. But to me, 13 years is far beyond, you know, what most school districts are able to be able to sustain. And any clue what that might be?
It depends on the community. If you look at Rocky River, they pass new money every three to four years, which is great. The communities, community just always passes. Lakewood's the same way, where they could pass every three or four years. Lakewood, you don't even have to put up a sign, the levy just passes. But then there's other school districts that really struggle. I saw one school district, it was a poor system school district in Trumbull County. They said they haven't passed new money in 30 years. So it just depends on the community. Three to four years would be great, but, you know, it just depends on your community.
To your point, Charlie, I think there, obviously, there's some that, as Sean just pointed out, that are worse than ours. But 13 years is a long time, in, you know, especially Northeast Ohio. 13, going 13 years is a very long time. And the fact that we're solvent after no new money for 13 years is a tip that I had to probably several things, programs and, you know, what we do and do not go forward with, but that's a long time.
I thought so too.
Any other questions for Sean?
I appreciate how thorough it was and how community-friendly it is. I think that, you know, all your slides are, I think, the, you know, the bulk of people watching, it's very easy to understand. And I like that everybody's on the same page. And I think that also goes to how we are in a positive cash balance. I mean, we've been very transparent for the last several years in terms of when we cut program, or when we cut, you know, we cut a lot out of central office. And that was Dr. Smilak's reorganization, and that money was able to provide services to students, which kept us, you know, it was money that we weren't trying to scrape together from somewhere else. And I think that all of those things, you know, kind of work together. And I'm grateful that you were able to present it in a way that I think everyone will be able to engage with this PowerPoint and understand it the same way.
And we will put the PowerPoint along with the five-year forecasted notes on the website. So if anybody wants to look at them and read them, they can.
Real quickly, can you explain to, I guess, the general public what the difference between the one-page five-year forecast and what the notes are to that forecast?
Well, the five-year forecast is required by the state. And you, right now, you have to do it in November and then an update in May. And you also have to put, do notes to explain your five-year forecast. And that part, there's really no set way you have to do it. I mean, I've seen people have notes that are two or three pages, and then mine are like 23. So it's, I mean, it just depends on the, I like to explain as much as possible.
Right.
Try to make it easy for people to understand. But some people just like to do the over, I don't know, the 700-foot view, or whatever you want to say, 7,000-foot view. But I want to make sure everyone understands everything we do and just put more information in there. But the five-year forecast, you have to do the three years where there were actual, the last three years, and then this year plus four years. So that's the five-year forecast, includes this year and the next four years.
I just wanted to say, Sean, it's, I'm really impressed. It's a very user-friendly, easy-to-understand, and the graphs, and you did a great job. You and Taylor did a, I'm very impressed, I just want to say that.
Thank you. Good job, buddy. Okay. I was. I'm not going to repeat everything, everything else. I will make. Okay, Pam, you are the host again.
Are we ready to roll?
Can you see the screen?
I can see the screen.
Next communication is Parma Council's PTAs.
It's my turn. Good evening, everybody. Once again, we hosted our November council meeting via Zoom. As much as we would like to meet in person, we do understand the importance of keeping our circle small and carrying out our business electronically. This is still a big adjustment. We're all still learning to navigate, and we do enjoy hearing all of the creative programs that the different units across the district are planning to support both the families and the schools. We are finishing up collecting submissions for this year's National Reflections Program. The Reflections Program is a national PTA program that promotes arts in the schools. All of the submissions from the different units or school buildings are due to Parma Council by tomorrow, November 20. We ask them to be sent to central office. The winning pieces selected from our council level will then be forwarded to Ohio PTA for further judging. The theme this year was great for everything we're going through. The theme was "I Matter Because," so we're excited to see what kids came up with for that theme. We wanted to congratulate Bridge Park, I'm sorry, Bridgeburg Elementary for earning the Renewal Continuation Grant of the Healthy Hydration Program. So all of the units in Ohio PTA have opportunities throughout the year to participate in many different grants, both local, state, and national organizations. We do encourage everyone to try for these different grants. Unfortunately, with the current circumstances, we did have to cancel our winter luncheon this year. We are still going to host a December PTA meeting via Zoom. It will be December 9th at 7:00 in the evening. Since we are unable to host the luncheon, where we typically raffle off baskets and all of the proceeds go towards the community scholarship, we are going to host an online raffle using the Cheddar Up program. Anyone will be able to purchase tickets towards this Chinese raffle. The link will be posted, as well as pictures and descriptions of the various baskets on social media and on our PTA webpage. We will also draw the winners at the beginning of the meeting on December 9. The sale for tickets will be from November 23rd, which is Monday, until Friday, December 4. We are also wrapping up our holiday credit sale, again, money going towards the scholarship program. We do thank everyone who's been able to support the fundraiser. Orders will be ready for pickup on Saturday, December 5th, in the morning, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Pickup will be at Parma Senior High, the cafeteria in the back loop. We will send out reminders closer to the pickup date. Our last fundraiser that we're working on right now is football squares. It's for the game on November 29th, when the Browns play the Jaguars. If you are interested, Annette Petrino, one of our council officers, is selling the squares for $10 each. This is on our social media page as well. You can reach out to her via phone or email. Finally, we are continuing to work hard at the chip program. We are preparing to roll out a video to share with all of the seniors to help walk them through the process of applying for the various scholarships. Typically, we will meet, typically, we meet all three high schools in January, but due to the current circumstances, we have decided to change that, and it will be a video presentation released in late December. Again, thank you for the opportunity to share what's going on with PTA. Have a happy and healthy holiday.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
You too.
Okay. Do we have any amendments this evening? I believe we do.
Yes, we do have two. We have, in earlier, in 2010, 2020, 10-461, we approved, I should say, the board approved, purchasing Chromebooks from a vendor. And we went to purchase them from the vendor. They, you know, they don't have them anymore, and they tried to get, we tried to get it, okay, well, let's get a different processor, and they couldn't do that. So we found a different vendor, CDW, which is the vendor through state pricing. So what we're going to do is resend the original resolution and have this resolution through CDW. But the CDW, it is a dollar more per device. So.
How many are we buying?
Um, let me look that up. I will tell you in a second, unless Bill Green knows offhand.
160 maybe?
Oh, so.
It's 170.
170, okay.
Close.
All right.
Charlie looked me off.
Okay, with that then, I move to adopt Resolution 2020-11496, adoption of amendments.
Okay.
We have a motion second to adopt Resolution 2020-11496. Any further questions? Roll call, Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis. Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Resolution 2020-11496 has been approved. At this point, we open the main public address, the board of, and tonight's agenda items. Any, we never received any today?
Do not.
Okay. And we move to the written record of proceedings, and I move to adopt Resolution 2020-11497, approval of the written record of proceedings from the November 5th, 2020, regular and special board of education meetings.
Second.
We have a motion second to adopt Resolution 2020-11497. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
No.
Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Resolution 2020-11497 has been approved. That moves us into resolutions. First one is curriculum, Mr. Vaughn.
Okay, Mr. Schweitzer. I move to adopt Resolution 2020-11-498, approval of college credit plus partnership memorandum of understanding between Kiowa Community College and Parma City School District.
Second. And a motion second for 2020-11498. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, Resolution 2020-11498 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything else to discuss, this concludes curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. On business, Mr. Kreis?
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution 2020-11-499, declaring select pupils impractical to transport for the 2020, for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second.
A motion second for 2020-11499, questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, Resolution 2020-11499 has been approved.
And I move to adopt Resolution 2020-11-500, authorizing the execution and delivery of a renewal agreement to the master electric energy sales agreement between the district and the power for schools endorsed electric supplier.
between the district and the power for schools endorsed electric supplier, Engy Resources LLC.
Second.
And motion second for twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-zero. Any questions or comments?
I'll explain this a little. Um, it's kind of like we have, you see on TV, there's, I think it's NOPEC, which like.
Right.
This is our energy program through the Ohio School Council and we're just, we're in it now, we're just renewing it for this year, for next year, I should say.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-hundred has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-dash-one-one-dash-five-hundred-point-zero-one. Rescinding Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-dash-ten-dash-four-six-one, authorizing purchase of Chromebooks.
Second.
And motion second for twenty-two twenty. Yeah, eleven-five-hundred-point-zero-one. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-hundred-point-zero-one has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-dash-one-one-dash-five-hundred-point-zero-two. Authorizing purchase of Chromebooks.
Second.
And motion second for twenty-two thousand eleven-five-hundred-point-zero-two. Questions or comments on the board? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-hundred-point-zero-two has been approved. And five-hundred-point-zero-one and five-hundred-point-zero-two, those were the two that you were explaining a little bit ago.
Correct. We paid zero-one, zero-two to show that it's the amendments.
Okay, so approved as amended. Thank you.
And unless another board member has anything for discussion for business, that concludes business tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kreis, but right back at you with finance.
Finance? Sorry, I have to get my notes here. I'd like to move to adopt Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-dash-one-one-dash-five-zero-one. Adoption of updated twenty-twenty dash twenty-twenty-one budget estimate and the fiscal projections for twenty-twenty dash twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-one. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, Resolution twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-one has been approved.
I'd like to move to adopt Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-dash-one-one-dash-five-zero-two. Approval of the October twenty-twenty financial report.
Second.
Motion second for twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-two. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-two has been approved.
I'd like to move to adopt Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-dash-one-one-dash-five-zero-three, Radiculation of Investments.
Second.
And motion second for twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-three. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-three has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-dash-one-one-dash-five-zero-four. Approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
Motion second for twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-four. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-four has been approved.
I'd like to move to adopt Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-dash-one-one-dash-five-zero-five. Approval of then-and-now certificates over three thousand dollars.
Second.
And motion and a second for twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-five. Questions, comments? Anybody?
All right, I'll do it. Come on, Mr. Nucio.
This relates to the summer feeding program. I know it's November, but it's still that program that we have the food distribution. And I, I guess they just are not do the purchase orders prior to the invoices. I don't know. There's this like fourth or fifth one, so I don't know.
Right, that's why, like.
I don't have an explanation, good explanation, why they're not doing it right.
Okay. Can we work on that somehow?
Yeah, I can.
We are. We, we, we had conversations the other day when this came up in the Finance Committee meeting about making sure this doesn't happen again because it, it, it is a routine that should be followed and there's been too many deviations from that at this point. So Mr. Green's following up with the appropriate personnel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-five has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-dash-one-one-dash-five-zero-six. Authorization to accept activity purpose statement.
Second.
Motion second for twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-six. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-six has been approved.
And I move to adopt Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-dash-one-one-dash-five-zero-seven. Acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
And motion second for twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-seven. Questions or comments here?
I'd just like to thank these fine people for remembering Parma City School District with their donations. It's very nice of them.
Yeah, it is. I'm just looking at them now. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Thank you, Steve. And Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-seven has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kreis. It moves us to legislation with Mrs. Carpus.
I do have a couple of things today. Um, so sticking to the state level, which directly impacts um, the majority of our funds and things like that. We have some new, a lot of counties have been certifying their election results today and yesterday. So you're seeing a lot of official flips and some seats. And a lot of pro-public education people have been elected, which is phenomenal. Um, and that's on both sides of the aisle, which I was very pleased to see. There has been a lot of conversation surrounding the Fair Funding Act and some maybe traction being able to happen during the lame duck session. Um, after talking to several people in the State House, it does not appear that that's actually going to be something that gains any traction. I know that doesn't come as a shock to most of us, but I had a couple of phone calls yesterday and today and it's just not really moving that way. So, um, we're pretty, uh, pretty stagnant there. Um, other than that, there's a few other things. We're really still hoping they're going to do something in terms of a moratorium in the report card grades. But it's, you know, much like the fair funding, it looks like to be wishful thinking. So, and that's about it for legislation, um, in terms of, you know, local things that directly impact us.
And thank you very much, Mrs. Carpus. Very informative and thank you for staying on top of things. Um, back to you with Human Resources.
I move for the adoption of Resolution twenty-two thousand eleven-dash-five-zero-eight. Approval of the following certificated exhibits, approval of certificated non-compensated leaves of absence, acceptance of certificated substitute resignations.
Okay.
Motion second for twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-eight. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-eight has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution twenty-two thousand eleven-dash-five-zero-nine, acceptance of certificated retirements.
Second.
And motion second for twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-nine. Any questions or comments?
Well, congratulations to John. I worked with John on several things, astronomy, uh, curriculum way back when. He's a, he's a sharp character.
My daughter has him right now. He later is.
Yeah. Cool. That's good, dude.
Yes.
Good to hear.
We got a vote.
Yeah, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-zero-nine has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution twenty-two thousand eleven-dash-five-ten. Approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments slash replacements, confirmation of change of classified assignments, confirmation of classified resignations, and approval of classified non-compensated leaves of absence.
Okay.
Motion second for twenty-two thousand eleven-five-ten. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-ten has been approved.
I move for the adoption of twenty-two thousand twenty-dash-one-one-dash-five-one-one, reduction in force.
Second.
Motion second for twenty-two thousand one-one-five-one-one. Questions or comments?
Sean, could you just, um, I know the board knows what this is, but could you just give a couple of words for everybody else?
Sure. Well, when we went to our electronic PO system in April two thousand nineteen, it created a lot of efficiencies in my department. We, we used to be doing it all paper, like kind of nineteen-seventies way of doing purchasing. And we knew eventually that it would, the efficiency would say that we don't need as many people in my department. And a couple of months ago, Diane Burns retired because of medical reasons. And we moved Tracy Denard up to her position as Financial Data Manager. And we knew at the one time with, we would have to, we could cut a job, but I didn't want to eliminate a person in my department. So when there was an opening, we just did not fill the position. So nobody is losing their job in my department. It's just the unfilled position, we're just eliminating it.
And how much does this free up money-wise?
This year, I estimated it to be about, to be about forty-five thousand dollars.
Fantastic. Well, thank you for staying on top of that.
Yes.
I, I have a quick question on that one.
Sure.
Um, so you're eliminating the AC four clerk position.
Correct.
Okay, because right now it's not filled. Are, are we certainly just don't not want, don't not, that's not right, that we don't want to fill it now, but I mean, you can keep a position and, and keep it unfilled, correct? Or you just want to eliminate the position altogether?
I would have to ask Mr. Hoy about, about that. He, HR, he would know if we're allowed to do that.
My, my, I guess my concern is, is once we get back to normal, nothing's normal right now.
No, I know that. I understand that. But he knew, we started the PO system in April of nineteen. We were going to eventually eliminate a position. And it was either going to be, we were thinking that we have an employee that she has a couple more years. Well, we'll probably do it when she retires, so we don't eliminate a position. But then when Mrs. Burns retired, then we said, okay, well, this is the opportunity to do that without eliminating a person.
Okay, I, I, and I, really, I have no problem with it. I, you know, as I have expressed with some other things, I just don't, I, I don't like being, you know, six months from now, eight months from now, kicking ourselves in the butt because, you know, what do we do that for? But if you're pretty sure that that's the route to go, then I'm with you. That's, that's fine.
I'm confident we are.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right, and Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-one-one has been approved.
Excuse me. I move for the adoption of Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-dash-one-one-dash-five-one-two. Approve the resolution to furlough Opsy Local one-sixty-five employees.
Second.
And motion second for twenty-two thousand eleven-five-one-two. Um, is there any questions or comments on this? I know we've, we've discussed it before.
Can somebody say something about it?
No.
This has to do with our EDC program and the EDC program, it's self-funded, so it doesn't get general fund money. It pretty much gets its money from parents who pay tuition for the EDC program. Well, unfortunately, with the COVID issues we have, we can't have any students or children attending these programs. So we're paying a hundred percent of the cost, but not getting any revenue. And the revenue has been dropping from the last year around, I think March was around eight hundred sixty thousand dollars. And now we're close to three hundred thousand. And it's dropping every pay, so we're eventually going to get to the point where the program is going to go not exist anymore unless we take some action. And the option here was to furlough the employees, but the employees who still have, I think there's nine of them, that have medical insurance, they'll still be able to have medical insurance through us. Dr. Smiley had a plan to bring them back in January, but of course, who knows with COVID what's going to happen at the time.
Yeah, the whole state might look like Barney by then.
So, yeah, we, we would, when we return a hybrid, uh, which again, we would project at the beginning of the second semester, uh, mid-January, we would return these employees, which is why furlough seemed to be the wiser way to go.
I agree. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-twelve has been approved.
Unless any other board members have any other items or topics for discussion, this concludes Human Resources.
Thank you very much. But you're still going here, kiddo. Policy.
Um, yeah, so we have several resolutions. We did have a policy meeting this week. Um, those will be for first reading at the next, um, at the next board meeting. So for today, we are approving five of them. So I move for the adoption of Resolution twenty-two thousand one-one-dash-five-one-three. Approval for the removal of policy five-five-one-seven-point-zero-two sexual violence.
Okay.
And motion second for twenty-two thousand eleven-five-one-three. Questions or comments?
I did just want to add that while we are removing this, there is, it's because there's duplication and there is a much more comprehensive, um, policy and its replacement, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-one-three has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-dash-one-one-dash-five-one-four. Approval of revised policy sixty-one forty-four investments.
Second.
And motion second for twenty-two thousand eleven-five-one-four. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-one-four has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-dash-one-one-dash-five-one-five. Approval of the revised policy sixty-one fifty-two, student fees, fines, and charges.
Second.
For twenty-two thousand eleven-five-one-five. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-one-five has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-dash-one-one-dash-five-one-six. Approval of revised policy sixty-one fifty-two-point-zero-one, waiver of school fees for instructional materials.
Second.
And motion second for twenty-two thousand eleven-five-one-six. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-one-six has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-dash-one-one-dash-five-one-seven. Approval of the new policy sixty-four twenty-four pyramid cards.
Okay.
And motion second for twenty-two thousand eleven-five-one-seven. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty-two thousand eleven-five-one-seven has been approved.
Um, unless any other board members have anything to discuss, that concludes policy.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Carpus. Um, any information, any other further information requested by board members this evening? Are there any new questions or concerns to be? Are there any new questions or concerns to be read into the record?
There is not.
There's not. Then I move to adopt Resolution 202011518 to adjourn to the executive session relative to personnel matters, specifically the appointment of a public official and the purchase or sale of property.
Okay.
We have a motion in second for 202011518. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
202011518 has been approved. Be resolved that the Board of Education of Palmer City School District hereby adjourns to executive session at time, Sean?
6:50.
6:50 p.m. Relative to the reasons stated above, Ohio law provides that school boards may meet an executive session to discuss legal issues, property issues, and personnel issues. Because of the confidential nature of these issues, this part of the meeting is closed to the general public and the matters to be discussed are not specifically listed on the agenda. No resolution will be voted on during the executive session. All voting must take place in open session. We are now in executive session.